Let's call the meeting to order, please. And we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the body of the United States of America. And to the Republic, permission stands one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Tendent here, thank you. Just pass that down, please. Great. We'll start with the approval of our minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look? Minutes? Any comments, questions, changes? Great, then I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 8th. Can I get a second, please?
Sure.
All in favor? Any opposed? Great, then. The meeting minutes have been approved. Okay, thank you. We will move to our regular business, starting with WLS report.
Good evening. So, the IT department at WLS, where the biggest issue was discussed last month's meeting, was a cleanup project, thanks, was a cleanup project to remove expired library patron cards. Some of which had a lot of catch-up to do during the COVID-19 pandemic. So, kind of the estimated number of expired patron records to be purged from the system is, if you could believe it, almost a quarter million between 2020 and 2022. For New Rochelle specifically, it's about 22,000 that were expired. There are several criteria. The goal is not to purge a patron record that's active. The goal is to try to encourage it to renew. So, there are many efforts done by WLS to encourage the renewal process. Essentially, the patron has to be expired for three years, plus an 18-month grace period, plus numerous attempted contacts to try to have them renewed. So, of which it's about 17,000 or so, right here. So, there are many explanations that were given, mostly due to the COVID-19 pandemic, pause on removing previously expired records to try to give people more of a grace time. And really, the goal was to maintain accurate counts for active patrons, clean up the database. Any questions at all? And then, other news is that representatives from WLS visited the Westchester Children's Museum to tour the space in the hope of exchange of ideas for collaboration between the two organizations, which I think would be wonderful, hopefully a compliment to the Huguenot Children's Library. And the next trustee institute meeting in person at WLS is going to be April 11th, 2024, maybe 5:30, 7:30 PM, understanding 414 public votes in terms of participatory process. The presenter is Rebecca Aldrich, Executive Director of Mid-Hudson Library System. I believe it can count for the two hours of presentation.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Here, okay, great. That brings us to the President's Report. That is me. I don't usually say much during the President's Report, but tonight's a little different. Good evening. Welcome to the New Rochelle Public Library, and thank you for being here. I first want to acknowledge the series of events that likely brought you all here tonight. And I say likely because I don't actually know. Oh, can you, yep, absolutely. I first want to acknowledge the series of events that likely brought you all here tonight, which revolves around a scheduled conversation with editors of a book of writings, speaking about social movements in 21st century America. I also want to acknowledge the many hundreds of emails we received about this talk, many in support and many opposed. As a board, we want to acknowledge and apologize for the hurt and disappointment that many of you feel. It was and is never the library's intent. It was and never and is never, it was never and is never, the library's intent to cause any distress for anyone in our community. I want to take a moment to share the policies we embrace as outlined by our country's First Amendment and the American Libraries Association. From the Library Bill of Rights, I'll share the following. The American Library Association affirms that all libraries are forums for information and ideas, and that the following basic policies should guide their services. Number one, books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves. Materials should not be excluded because of the origin, background, or views of those contributing to their creation. Libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be proscribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. Libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. Libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups concerned with resisting abridgement of free expression and free access to ideas. A person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. From the Freedom to Read from the American Library Association, which is posted on our New Rochelle Public Library website, I will read the following. "The freedom to read is guaranteed by the Constitution. Those with faith and free people will stand firm on these constitutional guarantees of essential rights and will exercise the responsibilities that accompany these rights. We therefore affirm these propositions. It is in the public interest for publishers and librarians to make available the widest diversity of views and expressions, including those that are unorthodox, unpopular, or considered dangerous by the majority. The power of a democratic system to adapt to change is vastly strengthened by the freedom of its citizens to choose widely from among conflicting opinions offered freely to them. To stifle every non-conformist idea at birth would mark the end of the democratic process. Publishers, librarians, and booksellers do not need to endorse every idea or presentation they make available. It would conflict with the public interest for them to establish their own political, moral, or aesthetic views as a standard for determining what should be published or circulated. It is contrary to the public interest for publishers or librarians to bar access to writings on the basis of the personal history or political affiliations of the author. There is no place in our society for efforts to coerce the taste of others, to confine adults to the reading matter deemed suitable for adolescents, or to inhibit the efforts of writers to achieve artistic expression. It is the responsibility of publishers and librarians as guardians of the people's freedom to read to contest encroachments upon that freedom by individuals or groups seeking to impose their own standards or tastes upon the community at large, and by the government whenever it seeks to reduce or deny public access to public information. It is the responsibility of publishers and librarians to give full meaning to the freedom to read by providing books that enrich the quality and diversity of thought and expression. By the exercise of this affirmative responsibility, they can demonstrate that the answer to a bad book is a good one, the answer to a bad idea is a good one." And "bad" is in quotes. I would also like to briefly read the ALA's library-initiated programs and displays policy that we adhere to. There's not so much more, I promise. This is a quote. "Libraries should actively seek to include a variety of programming options representing diversity of genres, formats, ideas, and expressions with a multitude of viewpoints and cultural perspectives that reflect the diversity in our communities. Programs should not be canceled because of the ideas or topics of the program or the views expressed by the participants or speakers, nor should library workers censor or remove displays because someone may disagree with the content. Library sponsorship of a program does not constitute an endorsement of the program content or the views expressed by the participants or speakers, any more than the purchase of resources for the library collection or curation of a display constitutes an endorsement of the resource's content or its creator's views. Libraries should vigorously defend the First Amendment right of speakers and participants to express themselves." The library board has made the decision to postpone the March 21st event, and I want to take a moment to address why we made that decision to postpone. As noted from the Library Bill of Rights and the ALA's Freedom to Read and Library Initiated Programs and Displays Policies, it is the library's responsibility to uphold free speech to the best of our ability and to provide multiple perspectives and information, serving as a place for all, no matter their gender, race, sexual identity, or political affiliation. We scheduled this event in, it says September, but I believe it was August of 2023, prior to the horrific events of October 7th in Israel and the travesties that have taken place afterwards in Gaza. We believe this topic requires a broader point of view, which we need time to plan in an intentional and thoughtful manner because of the sensitivity of the issue from all sides. We made the decision to postpone the program because we recognize the sensitivities and want to ensure that we have the staff capacity and skill set to successfully facilitate a constructive conversation. We also believe that there was an opportunity to consider more broadly, expanding the program content to consider a series of speakers and perspectives on social justice and historically oppressed communities. We have every intention of inviting these editors to participate as part of the expanded program. We will need time to further develop such a program. In addition, the library has logistical issues around theater capacity, the security and safety of our speakers and audience, which is of utmost importance, and other practical considerations that need more time and consideration in order to best serve our community. Thank you again for being here and for supporting our library and all it stands for. With that. Thank you. With that, this is a library board meeting. We have business to attend to, so we're going to get on with it. And we will start with the directors.
Thank you, Whitney. Well, I do have a report, as I do every month, and I'll try to make it brief because I know we have a number of other items to address. I'm going to start in relation to our many ongoing grants that we have that we've been able to garner through the New York State Library Construction Grant Program. The grant that we're hopefully about to conclude is an exciting one. It's the third-floor renovation, and the last component that we needed to finish, which is the enclosure on the third floor of the atrium space overlooking the teen area, has at long last begun. And so, we have the framework in place. We have also two very significantly sized conference rooms, meeting rooms, that will be located up there that will give the members of our public the opportunity to continue to use the library, whether it be for smaller groups or larger groups. And of course, you folks should know that once those rooms are online, they'll be, you can access them. We're hoping that the ability to start using them will take place within the next 30 days. So, we're really excited about that, and we will then be able to conclude that grant, which is an exciting one, and will allow us to move forward in terms of using the library in a more quiet manner. Right below that space is our teen area. Our teens are, of course, they can be a little, they can be noisy, you know, boisterous. We want them here to make a little noise. We want to be able to welcome them and not have the rest of the library impacted. And that relates to the next grant that I'm going to talk to you about, which is the grant that we received over a year ago, and that is to create noise-abatement elements throughout the main library. And I'm happy to say that we started with this project. It's phase one. We're nearly complete. We only have a few areas left in the library to gain access to, to put up those panels. Those areas are in very high, very difficult spaces to reach. Our vendor, who, they are very resourceful. They're working on ways to be able to gain access to those spaces, and we hope to conclude that grant in the very near future. And of course, just to remind you folks, that once again is a grant that we were able to garner through the New York State Library Construction Grant Program with, once again, a match that was provided by our amazing foundation. So, that is well underway. The next, we have grants, we apply for grants every year, so that's why I'm going on and on for you folks. Yeah, 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 it's exciting. We've been able to change the face of the library, particularly in the interior, through these state grants. The next grant we're waiting to hear about is the grant that relates to Phase Two of this noise-abatement, where we'll be able to get to other areas in the library. We're hoping that grant will be approved sometime this summer, and then hopefully we'll be able to start sometime in the fall. And that will deal with the area on the second floor that is sort of our help center area. So, we want to take care of that and also the main stairwell. And, you know, we know already that the project is nearly complete in terms of Phase One. Heard we talked about it. And what I'm hearing from staff and what I can tell you from our administration room, that it's working, that library is a quieter place without having to, well, without having to muzzle our teens, they're still being teens, but the library is just a quieter place, and that is a really good thing for all our users. You know, when I talk about our grants, I've talked about the main library, but I'm also happy to tell you that during that same time period, we've gotten grants for the Huguenot Children's Library, which is an important part of our library services effort. And the projects that we've been able to complete, because it's a much smaller space, we've installed new slimline air conditioning units for all three floors. That's done. We're just finished a very exciting renovation in the Huguenot Children's Library, where that, one of the major goals was to create more storage space. You know, it's a building that's less than 2,000 square feet, and yet it's a very busy children's library with great programs. We just didn't have enough space to be able to store all our things. We are in a far better position now because of all these storage enhancements. And in the lower level, where great programming goes on, we have done a tremendous amount. We have a new floor there because the floor that was there had been damaged by one of the lakes that are right behind the library, the overflow. We painted, we upgraded the cabinets, the counters, the sink. So, that's really good. The project grant that we're waiting on in relation to the Huguenot Children's Library, similar to the Phase Two of our noise-abatement project, is the renovation of our two restrooms at the Huguenot Children's Library. They'll be made more modern, more accessible, ADA accessible. And so, again, hopefully, grants will be approved by the powers that be in Albany and sometime in the summer, and we'll start work sometime in the fall. So, that's where we stand in terms of state construction grants. And while I have an audience here, I'm really happy to tell you that you folks should be proud of our library staff because we've written more grants and have gotten more money for state construction grants than any other of the 37 libraries in the county. And so, that's been able to allow us to upgrade our library at no particular cost to the taxpayer because the second half, the match, is from our wonderful foundation. The next grant that-
And this is funny, these are projects we would not be able to afford otherwise, right?
Right, right, right. We live within an approval budget, it's tight. We stretch every dollar. These construction grants, as you know, a few folks have homes. They're expensive, but we've been able to do that, and we're really proud of that. And I'm proud of the staff that everybody has had some say in making this library a better, more attractive, more functional, and efficient space. The next project that we're working on, which is yet another grant, this time not through the state of New York, but it's through ARPA funds that the city of New Rochelle was able to garner, is a grant that we're hoping to achieve, and it's through our foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), which made it available. And that will allow us to create in our children's garden, not take up the whole space, but a portion of it, like a children's pavilion space, an outdoor space, where we can have outdoor programs for our kids, but also for teens, for adults, for all, you know, for all ages. And so, we're working through the process with the foundation to do that. And we're not there yet, but we're getting closer in terms of signing that contract. See what else? The, I'm just about done, so thank you for your patience. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is important. Another grant that I want to talk about is a grant that wasn't really, not an exciting one, not a sexy one, but one that's really important for us in terms of our safety, our patron's safety, its staff's safety, is a fire-stopping project that we are nearly ready to be done with. And that, again, was a New York State grant with some matching monies as well. And let me just give you the report from our project manager. He says, "The base contract work is proceeding and nearing completion. There are several new conditions that were observed over the course of the construction that we would like to repair using the allowance for unforeseen conditions. Once that additional work is approved and completed, we will submit a completion report to the New Rochelle Department of Buildings. We have been holding off on the final patching and painting work at the repair locations, so they are accessible if the Department of Building inspector would like to inspect any or all of the repair work. Once the building department is satisfied that the work is completed, the vendor, Gleason Powers, will undertake the wall-ceiling repairs and painting." So, that's that. I just want to give you a brief update about another amazing advocacy group that this library and the community is lucky to have, and that is the Friends. The New Rochelle Public Library want to put in a plug for the work that they do. They're all volunteers. They're here at least three times a week and sometimes more. They handle the thousands of donations that come in on a weekly basis. They take the books and the non-print material. They save the things that we can, that we think are saleable. They sell them back to the community at a very reasonable cost. And the monies that they earn through that effort, and again, there's no overhead relative to salaries, et cetera, comes back to our library and allows us to provide programming and update spaces. You know, last year, they gave us over $80,000. So, if you folks are buying books, continue to do so. If you are interested in making donations to this amazing group, please consider doing so. Let's see. And their sale days, as you folks probably know, are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And once again, the Friends are accepting donations. They had stopped for a period of over a month because we were renovating their back office space, which again was a grant through a foundation, not our foundation, but another one. And so, now they're back up and functioning, and if you have material, you'd like to donate a box or two, bring it in one at a time. That's about all they can handle, so.
Same operating hours of the library?
The Friends are basically open from, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Whitney. The stores usually open anywhere from 10:00 AM in the morning to 4:00 PM. And on Saturdays, it's similar, the same, you know, give or take. And again, all these people are volunteers. If you or any of your friends are interested in making a difference and getting access to some really great reading material, et cetera, think about volunteering. Amy Teetz, who's incredible here all the time, she would welcome anybody that has an interest in, you know, contributing in that way. And last but not least, the organization I mentioned earlier, that's our foundation. I don't know where we'd be without our foundation, just like our Friends. They have given us millions of dollars over the years of my time here, which is nearly 18 years in total. And they just work so hard for us, they fundraise, they advocate for us, and we're really lucky. And so, they are, they are having a guardian gala that will be coming up on May 9th at the Green Tree Country Club. A number of honorees will be highlighted. Please consider attending or sponsoring if you are so inclined. It will be a really fun evening, and I can assure you, the proceeds will go to our library, and they will allow us to continue to be innovative in terms of upgrading our building, in terms of purchasing items, products, services. So, please consider doing that. The foundation also has a longstanding series called Cocktails in Conversation. And the next Cocktails in Conversation, which will be held at a wonderful neighboring restaurant, Alvin and Friends, will be on April 4th, I believe it starts at 6:30. And the noted author, Eric Kleinenberg, will be speaking. He's written a number of books, a lot of them about civic spaces, talks about libraries. This book is called 2021 City, Seven People in the Year, Everything Changed. So, please consider supporting that, supporting that event if you're so inclined. And that's it, I'm done. Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Thank you. Great, personnel report.
Yep, a very brief one.
Sure.
I'm going to ask the board for a motion to allow for the formal employment of a new part-time, an hourly person that we're very excited about. Her name is Zeneta Bailey. She is an hourly library clerk. Her starting salary will be $21.17. And Zeneta has already started. Her first day was February 16th. So, I would ask for a motion to approve her employment.
I'll make a motion to approve Zeneta Bailey's employment.
Right, one second. One second, I've got a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Great, then congratulations to Zeneta and welcome.
Excited about her, thank you, board.
That's it? Wow, so short.
I told you. Didn't believe me.
No. But that's great, thank you. Assistant Directors' Report.
Good evening, everyone. So, this is the time of year when we submit data for the annual report. And I'm happy to report that there are several areas that saw double-digit increases, including print and ebook circulation programs, program attendance, information transactions at our information desks. We also submitted an internet and internet use policy to the policy committee, which we are hoping they will consider for approval soon. The construction grants are one way that we fund our improvements, but we are also reviewing other grant possibilities, this time for outreach to returning citizens and for our digital archives. And lastly, I want to thank all of our public service department staff and community relations for their contributions in the publication of Welcome to New Rochelle Public Library. It's a great handout and a guide to some of the things that set us apart and to make us unique in terms of the library services.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody? Not tonight, thank you very much. Great, that brings us to our committee reports, and we will start with the Budget Committee. Corey?
Okay. Hello, fellow board members. Today, we're sharing with you the Budget Committee's recommendation for the 2024-2025 NRP, New Rochelle Public Library Budget. Summary is, New Rochelle Public Library Budget requests $6,888,669.43 as a tax levy, which is a 5.97% increase in the average homeowner's annual tax burden, or to put this in real dollars terms, $28 a year. The nondiscretionary budget line items amount to the majority of this increase, which is roughly 80% of the overall budget's increase. Those nondiscretionary or contractual mandated increases are salary increases, a 2.5% negotiated and approved salary increase in full-time salaries, resulting in a $112,276.50 increase in the average homeowner's tax obligation. The overall increase in salaries in the 24 to 25 budget versus the 23 to 24 budget is $146,688.86. This includes increases in hourly and weekend wages. Benefits, health insurance. Health insurance costs for full-time library staff has increased to 12.2%. The library contributes 82%, staff contributes 18%. The increase this year amounts to $189,340.16. In addition to these unavoidable increases, the proposed 2024-2025 budget includes only two other line items increases as mentioned above. One is a new full-time position, a library assistant that handles teen services and outreach assistant. $60,000. A modest increase in library materials, which, as Elizabeth has stated, we've seen a constant growth. That amount is $15,543.26. As in the past, we've explored numerous possible budget scenarios with varying levels of increase. In the past, we've tried to show a scenario- In the past, we've tried to show a scenario that keeps the budget flat. This was not possible this year due to unavoidable and contractually mandated increases in salaries and health insurance. In addition to these unavoidable increases, the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget includes only two other line item increases. The addition of a library assistant position whose teen services and outreach, and a modest increase in library materials. Teens are one of the key target age groups that the library provides services to and is in our twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six strategic plan, which the entire community took a, took a part of when we did our strategic planning a year ago. To fully accomplish the strategic plan, the aforementioned goal, we are seeking to replace the part-time young adult and digital media lab assistant position with a full-time teen services and outreach assistant position. The head of teen services is Rio Osina, created a well-reasoned document that calls for the creation of a library assistant teen services and outreach assistant position, which is attached to an email that I've circulated to the entire board. And it, Rio outlines that a full-time position will ensure that we have a dedicated staff member in teen services who can consistently and assuredly be available and relied upon. With this full-time position dedicated to the connection between the library and the community, we can broaden our reach, develop new programs, and increase the number of teens who utilize the library and motivate them to become lifelong library patrons. As Assistant Director Elizabeth Joseph explains, "We have seen significant growth in the use and engagement of the library this year. This includes the use of materials, number of programs, and attendance at those programs. The funds received not only allow us to sustain such momentum, but also helps us explore and offer new streams of learning and fascination." During this past calendar year alone, we saw a fourteen percent increase in checkouts of library materials, which included both print and digital. Eleven percent increase in requesting information at our public services desk. Eighteen percent increase in the number of programs hosted. Fifty percent increase in program attendance. Additionally, the summer learning experiences we offered this past year resulted in a phenomenal turnout. Participation in summer reading games increased by almost forty percent. Services and programs we offer amplify the academic and economic possibilities for people of all ages. We ensure an environment that supports and revitalizes the social emotional health of our community members. The New Rochelle Public Library is a cornerstone in the life of New Rochelle residents. It grounds us while allowing us to soar. It is the Budget Committee's opinion that the two additional line item increases are absolutely essential to the New Rochelle Public Library and can maintain our increased outreach to patrons, patrons of all ages via enhanced services, specifically teens. Despite the overall budget increase, you will find that the proposal for twenty-four, twenty-five is in fact, and as always, a very frugal budget. We are confident that we can explain the increased tax burden to the public in a way that makes it palatable for them. Again, the average taxpayer in New Rochelle will see an increase of approximately twenty-eight dollars from last year's budget individually. Given that the survey conducted to inform the strategic plan suggested that the community is willing to support the library through taxes versus an outside development group, we hope our voting public will support this budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cory. Fellow board members, do you have any questions about the budget for the increase for this year?
Nope.
We always, as Cory mentioned, do a, a flat budget and we do a kind of incremental increases and we play with the numbers to try to get to a place that we feel like we can ask for. It's, you know, we have to advocate on behalf of our library. The numbers kind of speak for themselves. We have incredible usage. Tom always shares really impressive and affirming and pride-inducing stats about the per capita usage of our library as compared to other libraries and how meaningful it is to our community. And so, thank you, Cory, and my.
You know, the biggest thing is a lot of contractual change. A lot of contractual changes, we don't, we have a legal obligation, we cannot get around them.
That's right. And that, as you said, was eighty percent of the overall.
Yes.
Okay, so, so between the kind of skyrocketing health insurance costs that we obviously have no control over and the, the the salary increases that we voted in after negotiation with our library union of two and a half percent, that's where we're left. So, thank you, and we're gonna, we, I don't, we have a quorum to vote, so we can vote. If we want to pass this budget or if we want to, we don't usually wait till April, do we?
Typically not.
This is still March, isn't it? We can wait if you feel like we should wait for a quorum or we can, yeah, okay. Or we can wait to educate the, our other, but Brianna knows and we've shared this board-wise. Okay, so if ever, does everyone feel comfortable and ready to, to make a motion to, or to vote? Yeah?
So I'll make a motion to pass the proposed budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, totaling six million, sorry, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
That's the increase. That's the total. Six million, six million, eight hundred, got it. That's it. Six million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, six dollars and forty-five cents. Great. Then can I get a second? Oh, second. Okay, talk to you in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? Then, okay, then our board has passed our budget as far as making a recommendation this year. Thank you. Thanks very much. The next committee is Buildings and Grounds. I don't have any updates. I mean, you made a lot of comments about our, our various renovation projects. And the fire stopping project in particular was one of the most urgent that came out of our building audit several years ago. So I'm glad that that is well underway.
Almost complete.
And almost complete. Great, thank you. Okay, Community Relations, and usually it's Rhiannon, but Fala will share information with us tonight. Thank you, Fala.
So in following what Cory and both Elizabeth were saying, March, sorry, February was in a very exciting month at the library. There were so many events that were very well attended. I'll go through some of those. In our lectures, presentations, and concerts, the Young Musicians of Westchester Concert for Black History Month, we had seventy, seventy attendees. The Ray Blue Jazz Concert on the sixteenth of February, we had eighty-five attendees. For the Book and Day Workshop, which is, was continuing, it continued over a series of weeks. There was a performance on February the twenty-fourth, which had a hundred and fifty attendees. On the twenty-sixth, we did a Red Cross Blood Drive. Twenty-five units of blood were collected, which is really great. The Songcatchers, which is a nonprofit in New Rochelle, had a Composers of the Future Concert, and that was March the second, so now I'm moving into March. That was eighty attendees. And the Irish Dance Performance on the third of March had a hundred and seventeen attendees. The WHM Counterpoint Concert for Women's History Month on the tenth had sixty-five attendees. Potentially listening to this, you might think, well, how can I go to something? Well, I'll tell you. There is so much that's coming up. So we have, there's a lot of events. I'll just mention some of the very exciting ones. If you're interested in the Eclipse, there is going to be a series of events starting on Monday, on the eighteenth. Adventures of an Eclipse Chaser, virtual event. That's on Monday, Monday the eighteenth. We're going to have a folk art workshop on the twentieth. There's creative writing classes, that's a series. That's the thirteenth, starting on the thirteenth of March, and also the twentieth and twenty-seventh. Our Knitting Club continues. We're going to have an, an author talk called Race Rules by Fatima Gilliam, What Your Black Friend Doesn't, Won't Tell You. That's on the twenty-third of March. And another song concert, Songcatchers Concert on, and now that's April, on the seventh of April. For marketing and then community relations, for email highlights, there was an average open rate in February, which was a near-record high of sixty-two percent. That's nine percent higher than the previous month, so that's people engaging with the emails. And we also had, which you may have seen out in, in, in the main area, there was, it was Library Lovers Month last month. And we had one hundred love letters that were written to the library, and those were displayed on a portable gallery wall throughout the month of February. That was very sweet. The New York Public Library, I'm sorry, the New Rochelle Public Library and the Huguenot Children's Library were both finalists for the Best of Westchester. The voting ran from February the fourteenth to March the sixth. And a big push to encourage voting was made to the community. The winners will be announced in the July issue of Westchester Magazine. And also, a very, very important program right now, the AARP Tax Aid Assistance. That's one that's, has, we see a lot of people coming in for that. And our T, our Tax Aid lead, Tim O'Bird, reported, "We completed two hundred and eighty-two returns as compared to two hundred and twenty-five last year, which is a twenty-five percent increase for the same amount of workdays." There is still more potential for growth, but that's very exciting. Back to the Eclipse one more time, which is on April the eighth. We're planning a community eclipse party to view the total eclipse in Ruby D Park, where we'll be distributing eclipse viewing glasses, safe viewing instructions, eclipse music, and some giveaways.
What time is that?
Pardon?
Do you know what time it is?
Oh.
Probably on our calendar.
I have it, yes, I'll find that.
No worries. I can also answer my own question.
Going through a few more things. The New Rochelle Public Library provides computer classes in English and in Spanish. So that's something where please tell your neighbors, community members, family members, and classes ranging from like email tips and tricks to security online, cybersecurity. That's something that's incredibly important. And, let's see, there might be, there's yoga classes. There's always the chair yoga classes and gentle yoga. Some upcoming dates are going to be Mondays, Mondays and Wednesdays, that's when we have chair yoga. And that's in the afternoons, twelve-thirty to one-thirty on Mondays. And Wednesdays, one to two o'clock. The next classes are on the eighteenth, that's a Monday, and the twentieth, that's a Wednesday. Let's see, and, oh, can't forget this. It's Women's History Month, and there's an extraordinary women film series, so we're in the midst of that. On the fifth of March, we screened Beyond Beijing. On the nineteenth of March, there is a film called A Better Man. And then on the twenty-sixth of March, Africa is a Woman's Name. So in celebration of Women's History Month, the New Rochelle Public Library, in partnership with the Zanta Club New Rochelle, presents three films celebrating extraordinary women and their accomplishments. And these films are distributed by Women Make Movies. That's the world's leading distributor of independent films by and about women. If you haven't done your taxes yet, that AARP Tax Assistance that I mentioned is still ongoing. So on Tuesdays, next Tuesday, from nine to two, that's the nineteenth, and then also on the twenty-sixth, you can come in. And on Thursdays, the next one will be on the twenty-first. It was one today, and then, then after that, the twenty-eighth, and again, nine to two. So that's in-person, and that's in the library's meeting room at the theater here. And they'll see people in the order in which they arrive.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful things going on. It just always astounds me at every month there seems to be increases, month over month. Thank you. Finance Committee, nothing to report. Personnel Committee, nothing to report. This month, Policy Committee?
Nothing to report yet, though we are working on some policy. We'll have something next month.
Thank you. Special Projects? Don't, I don't believe we have anything. Great. Thank you, everybody. That brings us to public discussion. Thank you. Great. We have several names. Joseph Farca. We're gonna just let you know that the, speaking is limited to three minutes, is it three minutes?
Four.
Four. Four minutes, so I'm just gonna hold up a timer, a stopwatch. Okay, and I'll just hold it up, and I'll remind you at thirty seconds, okay? And yes, to be able to be, this is a stream, this is recorded. So this is a recorded event, so we always have people stand up here so that we can make sure that whoever wants to watch in the future.
Yeah, on our website, yeah. And there's a YouTube. We send it to them. I don't know, we don't, we can investigate, but we do send it to them.
Thank you, Joseph Farca. I'm gonna start your time.
Hi, good evening. First time I'm speaking here, I'm, I'm very happy to do that. So, as a proud American and as a lawyer, I'm fully one hundred percent committed to the Constitution and to all the Bill of Rights. So I'm very gratified to hear your citation, Ms. Barat, of the commitment of the New Rochelle Public Library to not ban any books and not prevent anyone from accessing any books, and that's fantastic. The last thing I, or I hope anybody would want to do, is prevent access to materials that people would want to, to see. But accessing materials is different than giving a platform to people who are selling books to market ideas that are one-sided, biased, and in fact hateful. And just to give you a sense of the hatefulness of the authors of the book that was the subject of the author's talk that is being postponed, Anthony Arnov did an interview in two thousand with Nazir Asuri entitled Oslo Cover for Territorial Conquest, and a YouTube video entitled Anthony Arnov: Palestine Solidarity Movement Past, Present, and Future. That was October two thousand and three. And in two thousand and two, in May, he joined with Paul Domato in a presentation called Lies, Damn Lies, and Israeli Propaganda. Arnov is a, is a protege of Mr. Zin, who was the author of the original book. And his new protege, Anthony's, is Haley Pessin. She also is aligned with Mr. Arnov's view, which is one-sided and dare I say, factually inaccurate. Entitled, in November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, led a panel discussion entitled Palestine One-O-One: Seventy-Five Years of Colonialism, Imperialism, and Resistance. And that, that discussion bore the description, "Israel's Genocidal Assault on Gaza is being aided and supported by the United States and other Western powers. Meanwhile, the mainstream media acts as if history began on October seven, the day that Hamas militants attacked Israel. Come to this meeting if you want to understand the historical roots of the Palestinian struggle against colonialism, why socialists oppose Israeli apartheid and the occupation, and how we can build a movement to support Palestinian liberation." This is, to say, a one-sided view is charitable. Besides being factually incorrect, history did not begin October seven. It also did not begin in nineteen forty-eight. It began in recorded history, we know, far before that, and we can have a beautiful library to explore when that began. But to give a platform to people who don't understand the facts and who are going to perhaps spread hate by presenting one-sided view of facts, or alternative facts, as some might call them. And when somebody said, one person says alternative facts, other person, other people cheer. Well, you know what? These are alternative facts too. So I'm glad to hear that the board is going to revisit a more balanced panel where opposing views, and if you have a good idea and a bad idea, and if you have a good idea and a bad idea, and without characterizing which one is which, I might have my opinion, someone has their opinion, and God bless America. We should all have our opinions explored and heard on an even balanced platform. And the reason that's important is because just today, the news broke, that hate, like a cancer, spreads.
Thirty seconds.
And Superintendent Corey Reynolds of the New Rochelle Schools reported that hateful graffiti was discovered in the Huguenot Academy, that vandals used anti-Semitic slurs and racially derogatory reference to the black community. And he said, such acts of hate have, and victory have no place in our educational environment or anywhere in our society. This is a library where education is aided and, and supported. And if we're going to support education with one-sided views, we're only gonna spread hate.
Thank you.
And that we, we need to avoid.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Burton. I'm gonna start your timer, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was actually going to read what you, you read at the start of this meeting, and I think you should probably read it at every meeting so that everyone understands the difference between having someone come in to talk about various points of view across history, because that's my understanding was that the, the book is a collaboration of different voices throughout the century. And the two editors, whatever their position is, is not what's actually reflected in the book. And, and as I understood the policy, you are not supposed to limit access to information and access to programming based on the author, the editors. So, you know, the whole, there's, there's, our community is being torn apart. And, and anything you can do to, to balance that out, to make everyone feel as if they're being heard, is definitely a, a positive. But it's unrealistic, it's unrealistic to think that every time someone Googles a name and finds something that they don't agree with, that you should come to a complete halt and try and figure out how to balance it. We will get nothing done. I, I urge everyone, I mean, there's, there's, there's so many things that are happening right now that are distasteful, that are just horrific, and, and soul, soul-rotting. And we, we need to have safe spaces. So to the extent that you can create safe spaces for all of us, thank you. It's unnerving to see police here tonight. It's unnerving. It's unnerving that you actually have to say that you have to consider security to have two people come in and talk about a really interesting book. It's unnerving. So, I'm not sure what everyone else is here for, but I wanted to, to, to thank you for providing interesting content. And thank you for providing a safe space. And thank you for considering all voices in our community and, and making sure that we all are heard, that our feelings are all taken into perspective, but that, that this is an open space for all ideas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noel Elia, Elia Aliacs, sorry if I miss pronouncing your name.
I guess it would be easiest for me to just say I second the motion.
I'm starting your timer.
Yes, I, you know, understand the controversy very much. I do feel like when you read everything, I thought you were gonna say, and for that reason, we're reinstating their coming. It, it, it just sort of seemed like that was important. I guess the bigger picture in my mind right now, in terms of the climate in general, not only about what's happening in the Middle East, but generally speaking, what's happening with, you know, our political election that's coming up, the presidential election. The, the backsliding of our democracy is dangerous. And I wouldn't want this to be an example of one of those things that, you know, it suddenly, before you know it, you know, a book is banned, or this is banned. And I think that the idea of a full and vibrant democracy is everything you read about there. So I hope that there really is a plan to very soon get this thing going. And, you know, if you need two sides for something like this, because it's so controversial in our community, then by all means. I mean, we had the controversy with the flag that was in front of City Hall, and I understand this is a very heated situation. I just hope that you really are able to follow through with getting a program where you have everybody representative, that's what it takes. But it's so dangerous to chip away at, at the little things supposedly that create a democracy. I know that there was a action today around George Latimer. He was giving his speech around the county, and some people were there around the fact that he hasn't done what he said he was gonna do about police reform. And people were signed up to go into the situation. You're allowed to, to sit like we are here, which is terrific. And at the last minute, they were informed that they couldn't go in. This is what I mean. These, these things are, seem small, but they're not. You just don't want this, this chipping away at things that we take for granted in a full democracy. And I think the library is a very democratic institution. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Marvin Chinets.
Thank you for letting me speak, and I want to thank the board for the sensitivity that you've created for us. And I deeply appreciate the fact that you've postponed this. I'm also, not only a resident of New Rochelle for forty-two years, I'm also an author. And I recently wrote a book on, most of it is on the Israeli-Iran situation. I'm not asking to speak it here, talk about it here, because all of the United States, and every educational institution in the United States, anyone who speaks pro-Israel now, there's tremendous, almost riots outside, tremendous amount of police. You will never find a way, because New Rochelle is not unique in the entire United States, you're never gonna find a way to make it a public, a peaceful discourse, having one side, another side come. It's, it's too much hostility. There'll never be peace. You could try as best as you can, with the best intentions, it's not gonna work. And the best thing to do to keep the peace in New Rochelle, to me, it's an oasis right now in New Rochelle, but I see there are cracks in this oasis, right? Is to, let, don't have any sides talk about this. Because I'm not, I'm not, I don't want you to censor any books, people have the right to do any books they want. But New Rochelle, the, the library is a taxpayer institution. A lot of people on all sides have, have opinions on this. If you keep the peace, I think the only way to do that is to not discuss these issues in a, in a library. Outside, get permission to do public demonstrations is fine. It's just not gonna work here, because it hasn't worked anywhere else in the United States. You guys are great, but you're not perfect. It doesn't happen. That's the reality of life. Not pushing one side or the other side, I could give you a lecture on, on, on everything that's going on, it's part of my book, but it's not, it's not appropriate now. It, it causes hostility from the other side. I'm not trying to cause any hostility, I wanna keep the peace. The only way to do that is to, don't ban any books, no one's calling to ban any books, but the library is represented and paid for by all of this in New Rochelle to keep the peace. Can this issue on both sides? That's what I do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carol Damon. No problem. Judy. Say it again.
Dorago.
Dorago. Dorago.
Good evening, and this is my first board meeting, thank you so much. I've lived in New Rochelle for, I, I lived in New Rochelle for over forty years. And I gotta tell you, New Rochelle was my Camelot. It still is my Camelot, but we're holding it by a thread. It, it's sad that we're in New Rochelle is being torn apart, and although, I guess, political, everything that's happening. And I just urge, I, I second your, your opinion there. The library should be a neutral ground, no banning of books, no banning of books. But you cannot take this side or that side, because at any given moment, you can infuse or diffuse a situation, and I just feel like right now, there's infusion all over the place. It's great that the library is here. I haven't been here, I'm ashamed, I haven't been here in many, many years, but I do remember when the, I don't think any of you remember, there was roller skating out there. It's a wonderful place. And New Rochelle is, is, is a vast community of different cultures, and that's what makes New Rochelle great. But if we're going to have certain authors that at times can get very heated, and, and, you know, the facts, facts don't have feelings, but somehow the facts aren't only, only cited into one way. And, and you know, there's a lot of history there, but we're only going back October seventh. And it's not October seventh, and it wasn't seventy-five years ago, it's a long, long history. And if we're going to speak on facts, let's speak on all the facts, and I don't think we have time for that. So I do second, I do second, please remain as neutral as possible. Yes, do not ban any books. That's why we have, you could take out, anybody could take out any books you have. But I do encourage to speak facts enough. And I thank you all for, for still having this library here. After all these years, it looks great, and I'm gonna be back more often than I was before, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jennifer Garcia. No problem. You can't read this. Can you read this?
Andrew Newman.
Andrew Newman.
Or, sorry.
So, this person.
Oh, I'm sorry, jumped. Binder, Bender?
Barden.
Barden. Birchman.
Birchman. Albert? There you go, Albert, I know you. Albert Birchman.
My wife's been a volunteer for the.
Just use your mic, can you use the mic, please?
Yeah, she's been here for decades. My wife's family, three generations back, maybe four. There's a problem. I am in an area where I work, where things are very violent. There is signs put up, and I tear them down, because they're in front of me. There's a thing about, right, brought up before generations, what they talk about my mother-in-law. She had a very simple saying when it comes to things like this. When you stir the shit, it stinks. And that's what's happening. If you come in here and you let this guy speak, it's gonna happen, it's just gonna flame up the situation. I agree a hundred percent. Not just candid, abolish it, just don't make the library a political place. It's not supposed to be. It's an education. This is what you go to a library for, for reference materials, for the teenagers to get smart on computers. Not to go ahead and flame up. And it's not good. You see what's going on in the schools. This was the only time that the swastika was seen there. I have strong feelings, I should be enough more times than I wanna tell you, from anti-Semitism. And I just had it, and I just wanted, I wanted to get to New Rochelle. Wait, didn't time me? I can start again.
Uh, you're at a minute and.
It's all right, but it's just, don't stir the pot, just gonna get worse.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Thanks, Tatiana. Oh, yes, I, it was less than two minutes, oh, thank you. I just pressed the one. Jackson. Reimer Schmidt.
Hi, how you doing? So, just wanted to echo the same sentiment that we mentioned before about decision. I understand on one aspect, it's a, it's a difficult conversation to have. There's a lot of difficult conversations to be had in the US right now and in history. Should we really be banning or prohibiting speakers like Angela Davis to come speak here because she has controversial views? Like, you know, come on. What is education to us, and what is a library, and what are its institutional values? I think these are really important questions right now, especially considering the rise of authoritarianism in the US and around the globe. At some point, we have to draw our land, uh, our foot, what is that? Draw a line in the sand, that's the word, right? That being said, by no means do I condone any type of anti-Semitism. I have plenty of Jewish friends who also support Palestine. And I think there's no, I'm at a loss of words on both sides. I don't think, it's, it's really disheartening to see swastikas being drawn up. Any type of anti-Semitic graffiti, I feel for that, I feel for my community. You know, I've lived in New Rochelle my entire life, it is like such a vibrant place with so many different people, different beliefs. And never have I ever felt that I couldn't say something because there couldn't be people after me, you know? And I can't really say that now. And I've spoken out before and other things, not only in this, but, you know, with gender activism, and I found that there are a lot of people who support me in my community, but there only takes a small crowd for it to feel quite unwelcoming. And I want New Rochelle to be a welcoming place for everybody. Point blank. And I think the role of a library, an educational institution, is to uphold the truth, uphold difference, differing opinions, and to not shy away from things that are difficult. And that's all I really have to say. I do have a question, I guess, in terms of what the official stance and position of the library is as to why it was postponed. Is it because the authors are pro-Palestinian, or because you need time to include more voices?
The second one.
More time to include more voices, understood. And when do you think that time will come, that you will be able to have more voices?
We reached out to the authors and are waiting to hear back. So we're looking to hear when they're available.
Arnov?
Correct.
Okay, because.
Editors, I'm sorry.
They're editors? Okay, is that Haley?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Well, circle back on that. And, yeah, so I guess, like, you're trying to take a neutral stance until you have both sides, right? So, I mean, in that same vein, would it be appropriate to suspend the Israel Forum collection that you have currently? Because that seems to get somewhat, you know, taking a position in that aspect. Was there any plans, or, no, was that not considered?
This is a public comment, not a dialogue.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. I guess that's maybe just some food for thought, like, not, I'm not necessarily, I'm just going based off of the guidelines that you're setting here.
We, we postponed the event where we, we read a whole piece in the beginning, I don't know if you missed it, but that was what, that's our stance, that's our decision, so.
Right, because I was just, that's why I was clarifying with you as to whether it was because they're pro-Palestinian or because you needed time to include more voices, so, I mean.
We explained why in the beginning of the meeting, so we have that on our, in our, in our minutes. You can, you'll be able to see that.
Okay.
Okay, and we're at time right now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Andrew Newman. I'm gonna start your timer now.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Andrew Newman. This is the first time I've ever spoken at a New Rochelle Library trustee meeting. I'm gonna try to be brief with my comments. I want to thank the New Rochelle Public Library for postponing the event scheduled on the twenty-first. If a person or a group wanted to sponsor an event talking about the benefits of eugenics, I don't think you would approve that event. Likewise, if a group wanted to sponsor an event supportive of Nazi Germany, that event also wouldn't be approved. The speakers who are scheduled for, the speakers who were scheduled for the event next week support. support a global genocidal terrorist group whose stated goal is to kill every single Jew on the planet. Their ideology is identical to the Nazis. And not allowing Arnov and Pessin to speak in this light makes perfect sense. This has nothing to do with free speech and everything to do with restricting people who deny the truth and peddle in lies, often based on conspiracy theories that have been around for centuries, often called blood libels, which have led to pogroms and the killing of thousands of Jews. So, you know, I look at this facility, which in December 2022 had an event on this stage. The Nation of Islam was marching here. And I don't think that, you know, there's a place for speakers and performances like that at the New Rochelle Public Library. And I don't think there's any room for things like that in New Rochelle, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Malfatano.
Yeah, hi, Vince Malfatano.
I'm gonna start your timer now.
Oh, can you hold on a minute? Start my own clock, if you don't mind. Can you hold that a minute? I'll start my own. Because I can't see that clock from there, if you don't mind. Oops. Put on the calculator, that's not it. Okay. Here we go. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, well, look, it's 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 not simple, of course. And I agree, Ms. Newman, it's not free speech. It's a question of, and this is tricky, our values. Do you think it's okay to let a 10-year-old boy read how to be, how to build a a ghost gun? I'm not saying ban the book, but moderation, access. There are things in life that we don't always give everybody access to. And I'm talking about banning things. But in this particular instance, I think the point is well made that if somebody comes up here and says, I believe in the extermination of Jews and I have a thesis on the subject that I think is worthy to be heard. I have footnotes and everything. Would you ban that book? Would you deny them access here to speak on that subject? I don't know. Some wonder whether you would. That concerns a few. But if we are going to start listening to community concerns about our values, I'd like to ask you whether you plan on having another drag queen come here in June. Let's hear it for the drag queens. Come on, come on. Let's hear it. Now, that's a portion of the community. But if you remember in June, there were about 20 or so people outside here protesting with placards, thinking such a disgraceful display of having some idiot show up in a dress with a woman's wig and lipstick and reading stories to toddlers represents our values. It doesn't. It represents a small, select group of people who are ideologues, who want to press this on everybody else. And maybe a few of their friends are in agreement. But if we are going to start saying, well, this thing is not good, I'm saying that's not good either. Maybe we ought to have somebody come in here and give us a nice little discussion of Mein Kampf and how Hitler was right. He had it right. Didn't he have it right? Are you ready for that discussion? Well, your community values are based on you elected this board. That's gonna be on May 21st. In the last election, only 5.4% of the people in this town who even bothered registered to vote, bothered to vote for the people making these decisions for you. And that's the way they like it. They're happy when nobody shows up because democracy dies in silence. Let's not have our elections in November. Let's not really broadcast this on cable where some of the elderly folks in town can say it. Let's do our dirty work silently with our community. Okay, folks? This is where we are today. This is your board. 5.4% of the people who bothered to vote put these guys up here to invite some people to talk about killing the Jews. Are you okay with that? Let's see who shows up in the next election. I taught social studies in York City for 40 years. I got 20 seconds on my clock. So the bottom line is, folks,